What's the name of that school across the road from them?
Starberry? Star. Might have been star, I won't say picture.
Star, you said?
Yeah, I can't remember for sure now.
I suppose upstairs.
Could be, I don't, I don't, I don't know for sure. Oh, yeah.
I didn't realize his whole house burned down till this morning. One of the guys said they were out plowing one and he come by, he says, wasn't nothing left but the chimney.
Yeah, I saw some pictures.
Was much there before, but.
I think we got everybody in.
Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. We'll start with pledge allegiance.
Mocker, Packard.
Here, be conflict of interest declarations. Approve agenda.
A move approval.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion passes. Prove minutes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both same sign, motion passes. Are there any visitors to be heard? Hearing none. Rod, resolution for the big application.
Yeah, just two bridges we're going to um apply for rehab on the deck. Ones just western yachts and ones on the university just south where uh Earl Nelson built his new house. So the decks have been pretty bad. We passed him over the years and they finally got bad enough where we can get something out of them, so.
Need approval? I'll move to approve. Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Both same sign, motion passes.
That's all I have. For the ditch board.
Till the ditch word. Entertained motion to go into ditch board.
So move.
A motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, we're in ditch board. Invoices for all tag on the clay grid ditch.
Apparently goes your or the work they did is that what?
Looks like technician work.
Laura, Laura just sent them up. I didn't really look at them, but yeah, I think when they flew it and figured out where the spots are and stuff.
Yeah, that's what this is for. I moved to approve that.
Second.
A motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion passes. There's something for me to sign on that though?
No.
That's all I have.
You didn't leave early enough.
No, didn't get you out of here quick enough.
Anything else for dishboard?
Move to come out of ditch board.
A motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion passes, we're regular session.
Puts the steer right in the back of your back.
We're past visitors to be heard, but did you have something?
Um, I would, I voiced concern on another situation, I'm assuming, and I thought I should be here.
So it's on the agenda?
Yeah, I think so, for uh the Mackling.
Okay. Put this open?
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Let's see.
Everybody can see the vouchers and payroll.
Yep.
Yeah. Move to approve.
Have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I, I, I just have one, one question because it just kind of puzzled me. Two rivers, I, I know we're working with them. There's one that says pipe replacement and it's ten thousand sixty dollars in change and then there's duplicate amounts. Twenty thousand three hundred.
And that's a negative amount on that.
Well, it didn't look ne-
Yeah, um, it is because Laura had turned it an invoice and then I gave Jess an invoice. And after she printed the checks, she said, oh, wait a minute. So then we had to void it. And redo that just for the ten thousand. So that twenty should be a credit, like a negative.
Oh, okay.
To avoid that other side, yeah.
So that's, that's a void. Great. Thanks. That explains everything.
Yep.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion passes. CAA conflict contract discussion. So this is the court appointed attorney.
And I just put that on there because I didn't know if there would be anything new for that.
I don't know if you guys want to discuss that. Any of that in executive session, if you want to talk about any of it. Our contract for conflicts um representation for public defender will expire on the thirtieth or thirty first, but at the end of this year. So you know, you guys meet again on January third, I think. And so there won't be any court appointments over the weekend, but um probably something that we should visit with them about if we want to negotiate anything further or and like I said, we can touch base on any negotiation inquiries. You guys have an executive session or?
Yeah, I mean, I-
Do we need executive session, do we almost?
I don't, I don't think, do we need to? I mean, I, 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 I feel like the, the real choice here is whether to go with their proposed contract, try to renegotiate or um put it out for, for bid again. Uh, you know, I mean, those seem to me the three choices and they're, they're pretty clear at this point.
I would kick back a three percent raise. You know, whatever they were making on the current contract, let the three percent increase. Especially after getting the numbers. And if they turn it down, then I guess we'll go back on the open market.
Yeah. I think you're being generous at three. Be honest, but after seeing their numbers. You know, I don't think that they but I, I would agree, there's probably some costs associated that everything's went up, so I'd be willing to go with the three, but I don't think that, that they deserve anything more than that.
Because what is that, twenty one hundred dollars?
Yeah.
Because it's seventy thousand dollar contract, right? Pretty good increase.
So do you guys want?
Should we make a motion to that effect?
Yeah, that'd be fine.
I'll make the motion. So move second.
A motion in a second. Any further discussion? So Carrie, you'll fire that email off, gentlemen?
Yep.
Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion passes. Approval of check for ambulance purchase. It's going to be paid on January third.
So um, the ambulance department has has the opportunity to go pick up right away um that demo ambulance. And so if we can cut them a check on the third, they can go get it right away. Um, just needed approval to do that.
So move.
Seconds.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? So how much will that? What are we actually paying them? Because that's the, next year is the fifth year, correct? So we're making up the difference and
Right.
How much did we, how much will we be writing the check for?
Two forty eight?
Two, I think I have that in the packet too.
Yeah.
Two forty, yeah, sorry, two forty eight, three.
Okay, two forty eight, two hundred forty eight thousand.
And three.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion passes. That's ridiculous. Two hundred forty eight, I mean, we, we used to put twenty five thousand a year away.
Yes, yeah.
You should be on by mortgage payers.
I've been on here a while, but not that long, you know, the price has gone up that much.
Yeah, Alaska weird.
Yeah. Um, unassigned two hundred and sixty eight thousand five hundred ninety eight dollars for the building projects money for completed items.
So trying to figure this one out, Carrie, help, help us. The, so the um so the two hundred sixty eight, is that now in the building fund?
Yes, and then we have technically spent that over the course of twenty twenty two, so we just need to unassign it so that it just goes back into the general fund to to make up for that.
All right, I move approval.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion passes. Automatic supplement resolution.
This is for um Lane's budget. Uh, he had that grant for the drone and so his budget ran short at the end of the year. Um, but we just need to automatic supplement back in because we received that grant money, so.
Okay, I'll move approval.
I have a motion in a second. So on this resolution, it says reimburse twenty five thousand, but emergency management's only five thousand of it.
Yeah, the budget didn't go over by that much, so no reason to really supplement the whole twenty five thousand if he didn't need it all, you know?
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion passes. Or resolutions need roll call.
Um, does it have a roll call on it? On the bottom there?
On all of it.
Okay, now let's do it. So Hammond's.
Roll call?
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes, Packard.
Yes.
Mocker.
Yes. Motion passes. Contingency transfer resolution. This is forty three thousand five hundred commissioners for professional services and fees, fifty five hundred and fifty for judicial for books. Um, seven hundred and sixty to the auditor for group insurance, two thousand and treasurer for supplies. Seventeen hundred to public defender for the contract. Twenty four hundred to information technology. Nineteen hundred to planning and zoning for publishing. Six hundred to modernization and preservation for software, and a hundred and forty five dollars to domestic abuse.
I'll move approval.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Mocker.
Yes. Motion passes. Funded transfer resolution.
This is just the, uh, the ones that we budget to do twice a year.
So two hundred thousand to the highway fund and forty five thousand to emergency management.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing a roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Mocker.
Yes, motion passes. I missed this one. Is this one not on here, Carrie?
Supplement, is that the one that's left? Yeah, we have to have the actual public hearing for that one, so. That'll have to wait till
Okay.
Whatever time it is on the agenda, I guess.
Um, let's see. Motion to use salaries and county paid benefits from the general fund as an expense of a L A T C F grant.
So this L A T C F is kind of that extension of ARPA that I talked about where we get the two um payments of fifty thousand. And by motioning to use it for payroll like we did with the ARPA funds, um, that's the easiest and cleanest way for us to do that, so.
Well, then I'll move approval.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
Um, nothing other than our state auditors are working on our um audits for twenty and twenty one right now. And uh he was very happy that we had chosen to use that method because it makes his life easier too.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion passes. Well, we have to wait till nine thirty, so we're gonna take a recess till nine thirty.
All right.
I'll, I'll just update you guys all around a break. I mean, it's a matter of public record. Uh, we have a hearing scheduled for our injunction matter tomorrow. So we'll see how it goes. There's been a response filed and
We're back in session. Andy?
This is at the two topics with you was the uh J O B L meal bids. My understanding, we don't have any bids, so see when you figure it out. Touch basis begin if we need to reopen that and re-advertise it. Guess I can be a brief next week on what we come up with. And then uh Minnehaw County sent us a boarding contract. It's at the rate that we expected, I think it's a hundred and seven dollars or a hundred and six dollars and some change. And um, I think it's good for us to uh renew that with them just so we have that available in case Union County can't service. So far, so good with Union County, but it's probably right to.
Do you take any over Yankton?
Oh, yeah.
You do?
Yeah.
But most of everything goes.
We go to Union County if we can because their rates a little better. Right now they're going to be eighty starting next week. But Yankton's eighty five.
Okay.
And Union County's closer, half the distance, so that's where we prefer to go, but we do have a few in Yankton County about any given time, just because Union County can't take them because of you know, they're female, they can't take another female or whatever reason. Um, that's why we need Minnehaw County to fall back on.
All right, well, I'm-
Proof.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Both same sign, motion passes.
That's all I had.
Yep.
Drew, did you want to talk about the planning and zoning appointments? We can do that one early.
This is all moving a lot faster than I thought it was going to this morning.
Uh, yes, real quick, Jared Francis. Almost a couple weeks ago, he's leaving the planning zone anymore. I guess the house sold faster than he planned and he's, he's uh leaving. Uh, he already be gone, so we'll have to post ads and uh do the appointment here come January, February, whatever you guys decide, so. Uh, I'll have to get that sent off to the plane talk today or this week sometime, I'll get that sent, so.
Yeah. Then that'd be great.
When do you want to point? How long do we want to run the, yeah? How long do we want to take it? Last time it was two months, we took out two months. Two months, yeah. Well, six weeks, six weeks last time.
I think a month. Does that sound right?
I think probably more.
Yeah. So maybe get it for the month of January and then we'll put it on the agenda for the first week in February.
Need to have your knitting.
I know. I can get those last four rows done. Who was it? Um, Ina.
She knitted through law school.
Law school.
Which drove professors crazy apparently. I mean, she literally knitted. Uh, Ina Anderberg. Do you know her?
Her name.
Yeah. She's pretty.
Yeah.
Yeah, and she did very well. I mean-
This was whole sweaters and stuff, I mean.
Well, she, you know, she, she's one of those ladies who just knits without thinking about it.
So she never took, she never took notes then, did she? I don't know how you could. I think she was like Madame La Farce, they would knit it into the, into the sweaters. You can read the notes.
That's impressive.
Yeah.
But that was probably before they had, you know, they, that they recorded the
Yeah.
Yeah, and then actually, uh, so she ever actually practiced law. But she went, she went and worked for my husband at Mr. Smith's Bakery Cafe and she was the one who made all those amazing Danishans for years. They're like Danishes, banana bread, granola bars, all kinds of things.
Kansas City or whatever, became a bagel baker, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, she's a multi-talented.
But she never did too long.
Not that I know of.
He would at least, she would at least try to, you know, when you graduate with all that, you know what I mean?
Yeah, you know, it's just, the statistics are, are really, and I, I used to tell these statistics to every political science advisor because they all wanted to go to law school. And it's like only I don't remember exactly, but it was somewhere around forty three percent that were people with law degrees actually get jobs in law. You know, the, the majority of them don't, don't become lawyers.
Right.
They do, they do other things with their lives. It's like learning Latin. They told us when I was a kid. Oh, it's gonna be very useful to you.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, translating the Aeneid and Caesar's Gallic wars and
Good at Spanish.
Yeah.
Yeah, they discontinued Latin the year before I was in seventh grade in our school system.
Really?
Yeah. Which I thought was kind of curious.
And one of my kids from Momma's, both bigger, you know, other teenager boys would have all kinds of magazines under their beds. He had a volume of Horace's poems and Latin that he translated to go to sleep. Yeah.
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah, he, he actually went on. He went to college, he had a major, he majored in classics, Latin and Greek. But there's just no jobs in Latin and Greek. He had a, kind of find other things to do.
He had a, one of my dad's friends. Check his name here, but degree in French from USC back in sixty. And got recruited for the CIA to go to Vietnam. And all the French they spoke and then he learned Vietnamese when he was over there. So, yeah, there could be some useless degrees sometimes, but then
Yeah.
Yeah, French literature was his degree, yeah. They picked him up, so now he's manager of a major bank, but, yeah.
CIA does a lot of recruiting, Steve. Always has, and I, I think part of it is that, you know, if you're not in a big city, um you know, you don't have the kind of history.
Background checks are easier, yeah.
Yeah, background checks are really easy and they come up clean almost all the time. And you can pretty much know everything about everybody from just talking a few people.
Yeah, my wife's classmates, she had two classmates in the CIA. What a guy and a gal, that's just pretty strange. You know, I don't have, the guy still looks, you know, he's sixty four years old, but he still looks like he's about thirty.
Yeah.
I mean, he just never aged.
I used to get a lot of FBI background, you know, FBI agents come with my office asking about students.
And then it's turned on.
Well, the light's on.
It's charging, dude? Mine doesn't show that it's charging. Oh. Like, there's a little gap on your, it's not fully seated perhaps.
Doing it good?
No. Move to a, move to a different. But maybe. Oh, okay, now it says plug here.
Oh, you know, we only had it was pulling out a little bit.
Sure, some running now?
Yep. Yeah, I remember Crystal Brady brought a DOT guy. This guy was undercover agent. But he was, looked about eighteen, seventeen, eighteen. We come back and see me a couple times about different stuff and he was investigating a thing. I asked him, probably said, how old are you? And he said, I said, you look like about eighteen. So that's why I'm good at it, because he did everybody thinks that, you know. Last year, he was thirty eight and he did not even close look like them. He was a small guy, uh, Spanish consent, and, but he was just it did not look age.
Yeah, you get a certain image, you got a, uh, you know, undercover agent would look like, but they don't. I remember when uh, uh, my husband was a cop and every once in a while they would take a few people out of police department and they'd go there year long and they'd grow the earth and they would you know, uh, go to these uh drug, drug undercover drug operations and you know, they kind of looked like cops.
They did, they could, could draft them up.
One of the pure cops did not look like one.
One of the funniest lines I've ever heard was
One of the funniest lines I've ever heard was the night that Shaquille O'Neal was on uh, a talk show. And he said that uh, they asked what he's gonna do after basketball, he wanted to be an undercover cop.
Get rid of them.
Yeah.
He'd never, he'd never stand out in a crowd, no.
At Syracuse, they had what was called Skytop, which was all the air force. And CIA training or. Language. Of which one of two of the roommates that my ex had were, well, Victor definitely went in, he was Russian. And they recruited him to go work on the Afghan border to. Get people across, get people to change sides, et cetera. It was actually, it was Canadian and then worked in the US. And originally Russian.
A bunch of really interesting histories coming out now of the CIA. There's one on my, there's one on my list.
The comment was from another friend of his, he'd seen his passport, he said it was, looked like. An invitation to all of the troubled spots of the world.
Okay, I got nine forty five. We'll do the twenty twenty budget supplement hearing and resolution. This resolution, the commissioners for publishing is ten thousand dollars, treasurer salaries and wages for ten thousand. Treasurer supplies for twenty five thousand. Court-appointed attorney for sixteen thousand. General government buildings improvement budget for ninety thousand, and care of poor supplies for six thousand. Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, uh, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Mocker.
Yes, motion passes. So Drew, on the first reading, we just need to set it. We know, it's my, then set a date and time for second. And that, and that could be next week.
Yeah.
So if you want to start with that one.
Yeah. So we've got the rezone and the variance of first reading of the rezone and the variance. For this Toby Steele, uh, I'd recommend tabling the variance so we can have the vote for the rezone. And the variance on the same day, the final vote. And if we have to go through and re-explain everything again, why don't we just do that when we have the doom board members, was my thought. My plan for this, yeah. Unless we want to go into the history and the backstory on this now, that would.
Well, there is somebody here, I don't know what his questions or concerns may have been, he might want to hear.
Yeah.
So, I mean, he must have concerns or questions or.
On the Toby's.
Yes.
Thing, um, my concern was truck parking semis, um, specifically. Because they have heart there and idled all night, and I believe I sent photos to you in a video at two thirty in the morning. Um, my other concerns was garbage and hours of operation on the storage. And that's basically it.
So, the semi.
And Nick's already addressed the semi issue, talked to the owners who were parking the semis there, and they're not gonna park them, or he's told them not to park there anymore. The trash and hours on the uh, storage unit part. Uh, that's new, I hadn't, we hadn't talked about that, I hadn't talked about that yet, um, but definitely.
I can answer whatever questions.
Yeah.
So there's a question about, if you want to come up, Nick?
Sure.
You have a question about the timing of crash pickup or what happens or?
No, timing of hours of operation for when people have access to their storage unit?
Okay.
Because, I don't know, a lot of times you can see garbage flying around or noise.
Have a storage unit there, right?
Right, but I think the rezone was part of that.
It is.
Yeah.
So hours of operation would be twenty four seven.
Okay.
So, I mean, if it's a storage facility, it would be accessible at any one point in time for that individual. Um, you know, if there's, if there's a, a question of. Uh, annoyance or just disturbing things that happen at, you know, ten o'clock at night or. Or or if we needed to place something on the side of the building and says, um, you know. Hours of operation be from, you know, seven in the morning until, or six in the morning until. Nine o'clock at night that that people are asked to adhere to, would love to do that for you.
Yeah, that would be.
You know, as far as the truck thing and all that, we can ask. Um, it's private, private property, but people have parked in there for fifty years.
Yeah.
Fifty years.
That guy has been driving truck, I don't think for fifty years.
But they're all related, and they're all family.
Yeah, but.
And so the the uh, that it's been addressed already.
Okay.
And and we we acknowledge the fact that running a a reefer at two AM in the morning is just not cool.
And all weekend, so.
So, and they and they get it, and they understand it.
Because they couldn't park it in front of their house.
And and, but that's, that's up to them, we just acknowledged it from Jane's Boys, that that's not gonna be cool anymore.
Okay.
So, but we had to do it delicately, just like we want to do it delicately for the neighbors. And that's why we're doing this, is that we want people to know and have their input, we want it to be a comfortable part of the community again, we want it to be. You know, be able to go buy groceries over there when you know, uh, in in emergency situations or. Be able to stop in, just have a cup of coffee, you know, it's.
And more of a cafe type atmosphere. For the most part, it is.
Yep.
You know.
Yep.
The the truck thing is basically, I mean, and.
Yep.
And there were a couple, pretty much all the people on the south side of Toby's, I think, called or emailed. About the truck noise, that had been something annoying them for a while, so.
And we have no problem with, with advertise, if it does become a problem with, whenever we build those units. If if it even happens, uh, you know, putting a sign on there that hours of operation would be A to B. So, and and we appreciate it, so, I'm excited about it.
Yeah, man, I think.
But, so, any other questions?
No, I'm good.
That's all.
Not right now, so, so this is just the first reading, right? We just need to set the time and date, yep, and then table the variance for the.
And then move the table grand to the next.
Yep. This has been an extremely complicated process to get to this point, it's. But, I mean, a lot of research went into this, getting it to here, so. Yeah, it's been, I think we started this back in what May, yeah.
Give credit to 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 Drew, you know, talk or. Neckland and Burbank are tough little communities right now, but we're, we're gonna fix them, you know, together. And we'll get it so that it's easier for you guys moving forward on other issues that may arise, you know, on on other things. So I think this was a good beginning, gives him good footprint on how to keep things moving forward properly, so. Uh, and anything that James Boys or myself at AMS uh, can do to help, ask, I'm here. So, love to help, want to make it better, so. So do you have the time for next week that you?
Um, put it for nine thirty for the next meeting.
Okay.
Got a motion in a second to set that time and date.
Move to set that time and date for second reading.
Second.
A motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion passes.
Travis, what was that time?
Nine thirty. Next Tuesday at nine thirty.
Tuesday at nine thirty.
Yep. And then the variance will be, you have opt to vote to table that too, right? Yeah, to move it to next, table until next Tuesday.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, any further discussion? And that'll just be right after the variance or the second reading.
Yep.
Okay.
Same time.
Yeah. Thank you, folks, so no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Well, same sign, motion passes. Does anybody have anything else?
Two housekeeping items, uh, Phyllis and Mike, it's been great having you here, call anytime if you have questions, gonna miss you. And um, second, and I'll include you guys, is the billing permit report, send that out today, it's not quite done, but. Billing permits have dried up so much, I don't think we're gonna have anything between now and New Year, so.
Okay, good.
Thanks a lot, Drew, it's been good working with you.
Hello, Jane, motion to adjourn. So moved.
Second.
It should get to be our last one.